Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council meeting. Tonight, we do have some citizen comments. Is Tamika Johnson here? Okay, then we will move on into our meeting agenda and I will call this meeting to order. Tonight, our prayer is going to be done by Police Chief Kevin Arnold and our pledge of allegiance by Director of Public Works Tom Rose. If you'll all stand with us, please.
Everyone, please join me in a word of prayer. Lord in heaven, we'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for all the many blessings that you continue to bestow upon us. We ask that you continue to watch over this community, help keep our citizens safe, help keep our employees safe. Father, there are those in our community that are fighting illness, there are those in our community that have lost loved ones recently. We ask that you give all these people strength and comfort. And we say all these things in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. And Tom, Ms. Diane, if you'll do a roll call, please.
Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell.
Present.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here. Okay, we will move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the March 9th, 2021, and March 25th, 2021 meetings. Jeff, are these in order?
In order as to form, ma'am.
Great, thanks, Jeff. And any additions or corrections? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes, ma'am.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brian, any correspondence or communications tonight?
Yes, ma'am, we do have one. We received a nice proclamation from the town of Mount Juliet, and I've asked Diane to share that with the council and the public.
Whereas on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, at 12:52 a.m., a violent EF3 tornado carved its way through Mount Juliet, changing the lives of the city and its people. And whereas, three lives were lost and dozens were injured, homes, businesses, churches, and schools were damaged, many beyond repair. While we cannot put a dollar of value on the lives lost, the estimated cost to replace and repair structures, vehicles, and other comforts came close to $217 million. And whereas, the town of Smyrna immediately came to the assistance with employees, equipment, and friendly faces. Countless hours, days, and weeks were spent with them by our sides, helping us to return to a functioning city. Therefore, I, James Manus, Mayor of the City of Mount Juliet, along with my fellow commissioners, proclaim our appreciation and gratitude to the town of Smyrna and encourage all city staff, residents, and business owners to offer their grateful thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Diane. The one thing I will say about the town of Smyrna and those communities that surround us is, we're all in this together, whether it's in good times or in those struggles that we have. And Brian made sure that when the devastating tornado hit, we were stepping up immediately to make sure whatever services we could help provide that we did. So I just want to thank the mayor for the kind proclamation, and we know that if we were in need, it would be reciprocated. So we're very blessed to live in the community in which we live. So thank you to them. Brian, anything else for correspondence and communications?
No, ma'am.
Okay, tonight, we have two awards and recognitions that I am super excited about. And we have two proclamations. One, the first one is for the Senior Citizens Day, and then our second proclamation is for a special little girl that we are going to honor tonight and let her tell us about what she has going on in her life. But we're going to start with senior citizens, so Ms. Diane, I'll let you start with senior citizens, please.
Whereas, older citizens share their talent, wisdom, life experience, and are a vital part of our thriving community. And whereas, the Older American Act was adopted by the United States Congress and signed into law by President Lyndon B. Johnson on July 14th, 1965. And whereas, the town of Smyrna is dedicated to ensuring our older citizens have the ability to thrive and participate to the fullest in the community. And whereas, our older citizens can find within our community the encouragement, acceptance, assistance, and services needed for a fulfilling life of independence and dignity. And whereas, Smyrna, Tennessee, through a U.S. News and Forbes Magazine national survey, has been declared one of the nation's most desirable places to retire. And whereas, the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna, a nonprofit organization formed in 1971, currently serving approximately 500 members for recreational, physical, educational, and social activities, as well as travel opportunities, is dedicated to the well-being of its members. And whereas, the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna has continued to support the senior population throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, the month of May has traditionally been celebrated with tributes to older persons through the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna. And the year 2021 marks the 50th anniversary of the center, with special events and observances to be held throughout the year. Now, therefore, I, Mary Esther Reed, Mayor of the Town of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim May 1, 2021, as the fifth annual Senior Citizens Day in Smyrna, Tennessee, and encourage all Smyrna citizens to join me in this worthy observance, proclaim this 13th day of April, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Diane. If we have members from the senior center, if you will come forward. And it's hard to believe, it's the fifth year that we've been doing this, but it's something that we look forward to each year. And I will tell you, there's some of us on this council that are celebrating the same birthday this year that the center is. So y'all jump up here, y'all get right here in front. And to what I'm going to do, I'll put this here and do a few pictures. Look, a smile. Great. Ms. Fran, if you will do introductions or let them introduce themselves, and then I know you want to say a few things.
I do, thank you. Do y'all want to introduce yourselves?
Your dad, okay.
Well, on my left is Vicki Jones. She is our office coordinator at the Senior Activity Center, and I think this may be her first town council meeting, so I'm excited that she could come tonight. On the far right is Linda McNeil. Most of you all probably know Linda. She has been chair of our board in the past, and she is chairing our 50th anniversary committee this year. And last but not least is Patsy Brown. She started the whole thing 50 years ago. And, you know, she is a legend in this town, and I'm glad to have her standing beside me and to serve as my mentor. Well, you're only as old as you act, and you're not acting real old, so.
Leave it to Patsy to start.
Yes, Linda, is a former town council member, that's right.
Leave it to Patsy to start.
On behalf of the members of the Senior Activity Center, I want to thank you, Mayor Reed, and all the council members for your recognition of our center, and more specifically, all the senior population in Smyrna. I love being a part of this organization, I love my job, and I love that it provides opportunities for seniors in our community that enriches their lives, whether it be activities and programs that take place at the center, or trips that we hope to take again in the near future, or just being a resource of information for seniors in the community. The past 13 months have been tough for the center because of COVID, but we have survived, and we are slowly and safely working our way back to offering all the activities and programs that are loved and enjoyed by our members, while continuing to follow the necessary guidelines to keep our members safe and healthy. That's why I have Vicki here. The Senior Activity Center is very excited to be celebrating our 50th anniversary this year. We formed a committee during the second half of 2019 to start making plans for our celebration, but we had to step back and punt when COVID hit. We've developed a new set of plans, and we will kick off our celebration during our Older Americans Luncheon on May 11th at the Smyrna Events Center, with more than 120 of our members in attendance. We will continue with other events throughout the year, including our now indoor/outdoor yard sale on June 10th, 11th, and 12th, where we will also begin selling raffle tickets for our special 50th anniversary quilt that's being made by some of our members right now. We will sell these tickets at events concluding with Depot Days on September 25th. We will host our first, not just a spaghetti dinner, but spaghetti wine dinner on August 21st, a fun Walt carnival and picnic on September 18th, our craft sale on November 5th and 6th, and a Christmas open house for the community at our building on December 11th. So we're counting on things being far advanced with COVID to be able to do that then. We will conclude our celebration in 2022 with a community dinner to be held at the Smyrna Events Center. For anyone who is interested in more information about the center, please come visit us. We're located at 100 Wake Street, behind the Smyrna Library, and we're open Monday through Thursday from 9 to 4. You can visit our website, which is smyrnerseniorscenter.org. And to become a member, you must be 55 years of age, only five more years for some people, and membership dues are a mere $35 a year. The Senior Activity Center is an integral part of our community. We're proud and grateful to be able to serve the senior population in Smyrna and surrounding areas. We could not have grown to achieve the many successes we've reached, or we couldn't have reached our 50-year milestone without the support from the town of Smyrna, local churches and businesses, our members, all the citizens in Smyrna, and especially this lady right here, Patsy Brown, who made it all happen 50 years ago. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Fran. So our next proclamation, Ms. Diane, I'm going to let you read a little bit about this special young lady.
All right. Whereas, the children of Smyrna are the foundation on which our future success is built. And whereas, Eden Hummel, age 8, has shown great promise with the publication of her book, The Kid Who Had COVID-19. And whereas, she wanted to tell her personal story of hope and faith to help others experiencing COVID-19. And whereas, the town of Smyrna is proud of Eden Hummel, as she exemplifies the values that make the community strong. Now, therefore, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the Town of Smyrna, Tennessee, join with Eden Hummel's family, friends, and all the citizens of Smyrna to congratulate her on reaching this goal of becoming a published author and illustrator, proclaim this 13th day of April, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Diane. Eden, if you will come forward. So I'll tell a little bit of a story while Eden's coming forward, if you'll just stand right here for me. So I got a phone call from Eden's grandmother that she wanted to tell me about the wonderful things that Eden was doing, and the story behind Eden writing this book. And I was so impressed that I wanted to make sure that the citizens of the town of Smyrna, and especially the town council, got to hear about the great things that Eden was doing. So I want you all to know how proud we are of Eden, and what a great job you've done. Many of us in this room and some of the council have had COVID, and I think we all know how scary it is for us as adults, but for children, I think it's even more so. And to know that Eden took those fears and the things that she'd learned and put them into a book is something that is truly amazing, and something that I am so proud of to know that we have a young author like you living in the town of Smyrna. So because of that, I'd like to present you not only with this proclamation, but I also have a key. And I want to give you a key to the city, so that's yours. And then this is the proclamation. So you can wear that around, and you can tell everybody you can get into anything that's in the town of Smyrna. How about that? Does that work? Okay, so we're going to let some people get some pictures. How about that, council, if you'll? Yep. There you go. There you go. Okay, wait. One, two, three, right here. Great. Okay, so Eden, I have a couple questions. So tell us where you go to school.
Rock Springs Elementary.
Rock Springs Elementary. And tell us again what grade that you're in.
I'm in third grade.
Third grade. And go ahead and tell us the name of your teacher, so you can give your teacher a shout out.
Ms. Reagan.
Ms. Reagan. And Ms. Reagan actually came to see you tonight here at the council chambers, didn't she? So big shout out to Ms. Reagan for coming. And then, do you want to tell who your family that came? So, and then you also have another special guest as well, right? Okay, so do you want to give us the names of your family, so you can kind of give? And do you want to let your siblings come up here? I know sometimes that when one gets to be on TV, they all want to be on TV. So why don't we have them come up as well? Now, do you want to tell me their names, or do you want them to tell me?
I want to tell them.
You want to tell me? Okay, then it's your night, it's all about you. So here we go. So tell us their names.
My big brother here is Finley. This is my youngest little sister, Quinn. And my second youngest little sister, Charis.
There we go. So, and then who else came with you tonight?
Also my-
Oh, sorry, wait, sorry.
Also my dad, and my mom, and my grandmother, and my teacher.
And one other.
And my publisher, Mr. Larry.
Oh, so anybody else in here have a publisher? You know? So she bought, she bought Mr. Larry her publisher. So we are so proud of you and want you to know that we're so glad that everybody was safe from COVID in your family, but we're also so glad that you wrote things down so that you could help other kids that have had to go through this or that might still go through it. Okay? So this is for you.
And this is for me.
Oh, thank you so much. So it's called The Kid Who Had COVID. And we hope everybody will go get a copy of this.
And she did the illustration.
And she also did the illustration. So kudos to you. So nice job. Oh, did you sign it for me? Did you autograph it for me? There we go. It's all done. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Before we go into the consent agenda, Ms. Johnson is here now.
Perfect.
If you'd like to suspend and give her a moment?
Absolutely. I think we all can see, if we have children like this in our community, we have a bright future ahead of us. And I was so excited when Eden's grandmother called me to let me know of the great things that Eden was doing. And we appreciate you coming as well, for Eden's teacher. I know you guys have had a tough year this year, so thank you for all that you've done. Okay, Ms. Johnson is here, so if you, hey, come right, if you'll come forward and if you will state your name and address, and then you will have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Tamika Johnson. I live at 500 Noel Lane here in Smyrna, over in Creekside Apartments. And I'm here today just to propose a change on Old Nashville Highway. The speed limit is 45, and just want to propose a change to 40 miles per hour. I looked at the surrounding communities, as well as the city, and at the corner of Sam Ridley on Old Nashville Highway on up until Lee Victory Parkway, the speed limit is 45. Looked out here on Lowry Street, and it's 40. Went to Community in Murphysboro, Veterans Parkway, speed limit is 40 miles per hour. It's not really a residential community, but I just feel like the speed limit is a little fast. You know, Smyrna's growing, I've been here all my life. I'm a graduate of Smyrna High School, 83, year of 83, and I'm a proud citizen here. And I just feel like the speed limit and the traffic that is on that highway, it's a lot. And I just, you know, I'm here speaking today for that community, as well as for the seniors. You know, some of the cars, you know, even me, I know I'm late everywhere, I understand, you know, but I just feel like that it should be lowered, just to keep, you know, our citizens safe. And also, you know, we're proud to be a Smyrna pillion. And I know a lot of people are moving here, and some people, they're used to driving fast in the cities that they're from, but, you know, we want to keep Smyrna. We know it's growing, but we want to keep it as it is. You know, we're a small country town, you know, where are you going to go? Our roads do not support, you know, all the traffic. So speeding in just that area, I feel like it should be a little bit lower, and that's why I'm here today.
Great, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any questions? Brian, what I'd like for you to do is, after the meeting, or, I mean, if you can get contact information, which I'm sure Ms. Diane already has, if you can get in touch with her and have some discussion, along with, I'm assuming, Chief Arnold.
Yeah, we'll talk about it, yes, ma'am.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I apologize for being a little late.
That's okay.
You should have gone faster.
Okay, we will now move on to our consent agenda, and these are items that are determined by the town manager to be routine matters and not necessarily needing discussion, but if there's any item that a council member would like to pull off and vote on individually, we can do that. I do like to always read the consent agenda so that those in the audience and those at home know what we're voting on. We have a pretty long consent agenda tonight, so just bear with me. Item A is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Brenda Walsh as acquisition agent for utilities easement relative to the Spring Hill Road Extension Project. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Boozer and Company relative for review appraisal services for utilities easements for the Spring Hill Road Extension Project. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Randy Button and Associates for appraisal services for utilities easements for the Spring Hill Road Extension Project. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Randy Button and Associates for appraisal services for the Washington Street and CSX Railroad Sidewalk Project. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order four with Jones Brothers Contractors LLC relative to the Enon Springs West Extension Project. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute fiscal year 22 property casualty and workers' comp excess insurance renewal. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Thomas and Hutton for the Phase 2 design and engineering services of Cedarstone Park. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with the Minnesota Children's Museum for the rental of the Amazing Castle exhibit for the Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center. And item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Yuri Howell and Associates relative to the audit services for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. And the last one is item J, which is consideration of the declaration of surplus items. Is there any item on the consent agenda that council would like to pull off and discuss Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Tonight, under Old Business, we have four public hearings. Our first public hearing is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 51, partial 16.00 and 18.03. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the plan of services. Was recommended by the planning commission for the annexation. It is the next item on your agenda. This puts in writing that the town will be providing all services to this area upon effective date of annexation, as this does lie within our water service boundary. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend it.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, seeing none, I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of properties located on Tax Map 51, partial 16.00 and 18.03 requested by John Burns, containing approximately 32.59 acres. The property is located on Lee Road, and this is the second reading. Kevin?
This is an annexation request. It's for properties on Lee Road, about 1,000 feet east of the intersection with Montgomery Way. The site also has two streets, Spriggan Way and Napa Valley Drive, that have been stubbed into it from the adjoining developments. Land use plan will support medium-density residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mixture of PRD, which is the Woodmont, Woodpoint, and Creekstone Village developments in town, and RM in Rutherford County. Again, as we said earlier, the town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation. Sewer would be extended to this development from the Olive Branch Sewer Line that the town is currently constructing. The proposed PRD is for 95 lots, single-family development. Access would be from the two locations on Lee Road, as well as the two stub streets. Minimum square footage of the houses would be 1,800 square feet. The overall density is 2.92 houses per acre. Did attach the pattern book that came along with this request as well, so would also be tied to the zoning. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval unanimously, with one condition, that they would be required to submit a traffic study in compliance with Section 3.200 of the zoning ordinance. So staff would also recommend approval.
Any changes?
No changes since first reading.
Questions or comments before we go to the public hearing? Seeing none, I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is a consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance 21-10 relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of properties located on Tax Map 51, partial 16.00 and 18.03, comprising a total of approximately 32.59 acres. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map 33, part of partial 6.00 and Tax Map 33B, Group B, parcel 3.01, to go from R1 to R3. It's requested by Sam Coleman on behalf of Ronald S. Patterson at Hall and Mary Ridley Live Sea at Hall, and the properties requested to be rezoned contain approximately 72 acres and are located at the terminus of Spring Hill Drive, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is just a rezoning request, just from R1 to R3. It's two separate tracts of land tolling, the approximately 72 acres. They are located at the southern end of Spring Hill Drive, there's also five other streets that are stubbed into it. There's also five other streets that are stubbed into it from various other developments. Land use plan would support medium density residential development in this area, and the surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and R3. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval unanimously, and staff would also recommend approval.
Staff would also recommend what?
Approval. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Questions for Kevin? Okay. Then we will go to the public, since this is a public hearing, to see if there is anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I move we approve.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last public hearing tonight is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 54, parcel 15.24, to go from R3 to PRD. It's requested by Sean Collins, containing approximately 13.3 acres. The property is located at 8964 Rocky Fork Ammival Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this request is, as you said, at 8964 Rocky Fork Ammival Road. It's about 1,100 feet southeast of the intersection with Kedron Church Road. Land use plan would support a medium density residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of the bank side and westover PRDs in town and RM in Rutherford County. The proposed PRD is for a development containing 33 single-family lots and 24 townhomes for a density of 4.29 units per acre. Access would be from Rocky Fork Ammival Row with two streets stubbed into the surrounding properties. The single-family houses would range from 1,600 to 3,000 square feet, and the townhomes would be 1,250 square feet minimum. The townhomes would also be age restricted. This site is served by CUD for water and currently does not have adequate fire flow, so building permits would not be issued for this development until that issue is resolved. As with the other PRDs, I did include the pattern book and everything that was submitted that goes along with this request. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? Okay. This is our last public hearing, so I'll see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor and Council abstaining, please.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Now move on to our planning commission report under new business. We have five items tonight. Our first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation R1 with ESO zoning of property located within the existing right-of-way of Interstate 24 on tax map 33, containing approximately 1.75 acres, and this is a first reading.
Mr. Mayor, it seemed to have a slide missing there, so I apologize for that. This is an annexation that the town is looking at doing. This would annex just a portion of the right-of-way of Interstate 24. This would be, within this portion of the right-of-way, there was a frontage road built when 24 was constructed. And when the town annexed all the properties on the east side of I-24, we did not annex the right-of-way, so this frontage road is not within the town limits. The road is used frequently by residents in the area, which are all within the town residents, town citizens. But the, it's never, the road is, the frontage road has never been properly maintained. It's also become a popular place for people to litter and dump their trash. And so the annexation will allow for the town to perform the maintenance as well as provide enforcement regarding the illegal dumping. Basically, it's the annex, it's the portion of the right-of-way which connects the end of Seven Oaks Boulevard to Enon Springs Road West, basically from those adjoining private property lines closer, over towards the interstate fence. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and R3, and the land use plan would support office-retail multifamily mix here. The area would be zoned R1, just because the adjoining properties are zoned R1. Those properties are also in the Enon Springs overlay, so we did just go ahead and include that as well. The planning commission did review this annexation, did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Great. I know this was an area that we had gotten quite a few calls about, and Brian, I know y'all kind of took this on and tried to come up with what was going to be the best for our citizens in regards to the aesthetics with all the dumping that was going on, but also continuing to allow the cut through. So I appreciate you all doing that. So, questions or comments? Tim or Mark, anything you want to add on that one?
You hit it all exactly what we discussed.
Okay. Council, any comments or questions? Then do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now move on to item two, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 33, parcel 41.00, to go from R4 with ESO to PRD with ESO. It's requested by Janet Abraham. It's containing approximately 1.98 acres, and the property is located at 2090 Rocky Fork Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a rezoning request at 2090 Rocky Fork Road. It's about 1,100 feet from the intersection with Old Nashville Highway. It's also directly across from Hunter Chase Drive. Land use plan would support an office-retail multifamily mix in this area, and the surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3, and C2. The proposed PRD is for 10 single-family attached units constructed in five buildings. Access would be from Rocky Fork Road via a private drive. The units will be brick or stone and concrete siding with at least 20% of the exterior as brick or stone. Again, we did attach the pattern book. This is one that the planning commission has discussed a couple of different meetings and was deferred one month before they felt comfortable enough to recommend it to you. There were several conditions that were a part of, they did recommend approval, but with several conditions. And I received today a set of revised plans, which corrected a few of the conditions, but not all of them. I will, since I just received it today, I did not get a chance to get it all out to you. Will certainly get that to you if you approve it tonight on first reading. I would certainly send that to you before your workshop, so you could see the revisions. But I'll, so I'll go through the list of conditions and kind of go through, over those for you. The first one is we asked them to show the dimensions of the driveways. We were primarily concerned about units one and 10 because they were, especially unit one was somewhat shallow, we thought, and didn't have enough room to park the vehicles that were, like we try to provide for. And so we asked them to move units one and two, which are the ones, those two units, as close as possible to the front setback along Rocky Fork Road, to increase the amount of room to park the vehicles in the driveway. The revision today did have that done. They did not have the dimensions shown. He told me verbally over the phone, it was 29 feet, but we don't have the actual drawings. Also within that, the fire department will need to review and approve any final layout of those plans, so I need to get them and every, all the other staff, those revised plans as well, because I'm going to just receive them this afternoon, so. Number two, he did not address yet regarding the internal setback details. Number three, they need to provide the required minimum square footages of open space and improved open space per section 4.070C of the current zoning ordinance. He provides open space and amenities, but he based it on our old requirements, and he needs to look at the new requirements. I think they're okay. They just need to show that. Number four was really kind of an informational comment regarding stormwater. There is a, appears to be a stream bed on the northeast corner of the site, and just concerned about stormwater requirements in that stream bed and being protected if it is a mapped stream of PRTDex requirements. So he told me today, he's contacted them to come out and take a look at that, but he has not received, have not yet. So that one would need to remain. Number five, regarding the lowing fire hydrant location still needs to be remained. Number six, regarding the sidewalk along Rocky Fork Road, that has been addressed with the revised plan as well as the buffer between the units and Rocky Fork Road. Those two were, have been addressed. Number eight was kind of an informational comment. They will have to provide landscaping to meet design review if this is approved and goes to the site plan. And then the architectural elevations showing all siding building, and so we asked them to revise those to reflect that. So again, so basically six and seven have been addressed, and a part of what comment one has been addressed between planning commission and now. And the planning commission did review this and did recommend approval. Staff would recommend approval with all those conditions being met as detailed by the, in the planning commission conditions, the list.
Questions for Kevin? Mark or Tim, anything y'all want to add?
We struggled with this probably the same way some of you guys are. We just wanted to make sure we had the turn ratios right for the fire department. That was one of our big issues, and the developer, or I guess the engineer, promised us that he would resolve that, and I think we made that contingent upon Chief Bill and Captain Byers looking at it again and making sure they were comfortable with it. I don't know that that's happened if you just got that in today.
They have not had that yet, no.
The siding product we mentioned is not vinyl, just so.
It is a concrete siding, yes.
Yeah. So just to be clear on that, I mean, sometimes when siding's thrown out there, you might surmise that it's a vinyl product, but it's not, so. This sits right next to KOA campground, and we are requiring buffers on the perimeters of the property. And so for those reasons and probably those reasons alone, we felt like, you know, even though it's a little dense, it sort of fits where it sits, so.
Tim, anything to add?
I guess sitting here, listening to the list of what's yet to be accomplished, I was hopeful that we would have much more of it done prior to the meeting, and if we were making the decision, you know, several more of these items were to be knocked out and to have your report that, you know, maybe one or two open items, but we, I guess listening to this and hearing the multiple items that remain open, I'm not at a total comfort level to go forward. Having said that, I'm in agreement with Mark in that for this area, what we're seeing here is a good fit, and with some more of, more input from Kevin, that these items have been accomplished and they're what we're looking for, I could be in support of them. But right now, at this moment, I'm not.
Are you going to defer?
So I'm going to make a motion to defer. I'd like Kevin and staff to have a little more time to look at it.
Okay. So we have a motion to defer. Do we have a second? Motion and a second? Discussion? Kevin, just for the public and for even the one that has requested this, can you talk a little bit about the deferral process and what that means?
Basically, this is his first reading. If you defer on first reading, that means you all will still need to vote on it twice. It also means the public hearing gets delayed from next month till June. So it does delay everything 30 days, and that's really the main difference, obviously.
But it puts the ball in their court to get some of those items taken care of so that we have a comfort level with the project.
Right.
Which I think is what Tim was saying.
Yeah.
I want to give Kevin and staff an opportunity to develop that comfort level so that when they report back to us, some of the items are, you know, they're fairly big-ticket items as far as getting this done. And again, I'll state that if these things were done and with the time that we put into them, if this had come here and they had addressed all these items, I probably would have been in favor of it at this point in time. I just, just like a little more checking of this to make sure that we as a council and as a staff have a comfort level with what we're doing here.
Great. Any other comments or, sure?
I'll echo what Tim said. I, when we were going through that list, I kind of felt like I, again, going through each one of them, it was, they hadn't been done, and that was kind of disappointing to me for it to get this far and not to have them done. So I echo what Tim says.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
Only comments I have is I agree with everything that Tim and Jerry and everybody say, and, you know, this is a duplex product in this particular area. I was just chatting with Mark on the side here. I believe that Hunter Chase Drive area has duplexes in it already as well, so, you know, we've talked about, there's a place for everything, you know, that as long as it fits the area, and I think this is a perfect example of a product that's a little more dense, but it fits the area it's going in. So I would tend to be in favor of this as well, if we can get these eight or nine items knocked out.
I agree. I think that's the thing that Tim is pointing out now. We were hoping some of these items would be knocked out, but they're not yet, so I think it's probably fair to put it right back in their court and say, hey, bring it to us as a completed product, and we can feel a little bit better about moving forward or backward with it. But I just, you kind of like to see some motivation take place, I guess.
Anybody else? Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor to deny. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, to defer. Sorry. To defer, thank you. We have a motion and a second to defer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to defer. Move on to item three, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 27N, group B, parcel 29.01, to go from C2 to C5. It's requested by Amir Rochan on behalf of Fareed and Mamouche DaVinci, and the property requested to be rezoned contains 1.35 acres and is located at 770 Nissan Drive, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a piece of property that's at the corner of Nissan Drive and Bracken Court. It's 1.35 acres. Land use plan would support commercial development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2 and PNO2. The planning commission did review this, did recommend denial, and staff would also recommend denial.
Mark or Tim, anything else to add?
As you all know, the body some time ago, year and a half or two ago, I think we decided we were going to try to find proper zoning for certain types of operations. And this one, when you look at it, the C5 requested zone, just for whatever reason didn't make, I'm sorry, the zoning that they requested just didn't seem to make as good a sense for us there, so.
Yeah, I mean, we were looking for some consistency in this area to see if there were any other types of operation in that, and we didn't find it consistent with this area. And we didn't see that it fit with the overall zoning and what we're trying to achieve for this area as it develops and continues to develop. It's very heavily office and professional restaurant retail. It's just, we felt like, again, this just was not consistent with the zoning in this area.
And that used to be which old back, first city, yeah. Other comments or questions?
I think these guys have stated it well.
I agree.
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to deny the request.
A motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second to deny. Any other discussion? All in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is denied. Move on to item four, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 50, part of parcel 7.03, to go from C2 to PCD. It's requested by Rob Mulson on behalf of Bob Parks. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately .66 acres, and it is located at Seven Oaks Boulevard, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this rezoning request is on Seven Oaks Boulevard. It's about 300 feet from the intersection with Ammival Road. It's, land use plan would support office-retail multifamily mix in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2 and R1. The proposed PCD is for an oil and lube business. Access would be from Seven Access would be from Seven Oaks Boulevard via a single access point. It would be shared with the future development on the adjoining parcel to the east. The requested property is part of a larger parcel that has been approved by the planning commission to be divided into three lots and this would basically be the middle of the three lots. The proposed building would be approximately 1,700 square feet in size, would have three bays. It would be built primarily with brick with efus used on a portion of the tower where the signage would be located. Again, I did attach the pattern book, which has some additional information in it. The planning commission did review this request, did recommend approval and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, I'm assuming I'm not. I think I'm correct, but the PCD works just like a PRD. Any additional uses for this property or any different uses would have to come back before the council. So oil and lube, it is all there.
It all could be there.
Got it.
Other comments or questions?
I'll comment on this one. Just across the street, we have a previously approved site for an automotive repair. So from where as we were looking at the prior one where it wasn't consistent, we're finding consistency here. It's just off of the interstate. So from that aspect, I was in favor of it. And secondly, one of the big concerns we had was the potential for stacking and wanting to make sure that the stacking occurred on the premises. There are three bays, three lanes. The goal is, you know, in and out within 10 to 15 minutes to reduce any potential stacking out onto Seven Oaks there. And we were convinced with the plan and the discussion that that would not be an issue.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Sure. I understand, I realize that we approved another automotive related business a couple of months ago and that this may fit here, but I also know that we have some other types of businesses going around Seven Oaks and I'd like to see more of a mix or something that doesn't seem to be weighing heavily on the automotive side because I think we could probably get some more kind of office related space there. And so that's one of the things I would like to see more diversity in what comes in this specific area specifically because we are, it is off of the interstate and I think that some other things could go right there. So that's, that's just my concern with, with.
Other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. We now move on to our last item under new business of the planning commission report. It's consideration of a request for right of way abandonment and land swap between the Town of Smyrna and Alcorn Properties LLC. Kevin?
Yes, Alcorn Properties LLC owns three tracts of land totaling 12.8 acres, which border Enon Springs Road West and Percival Street. These tracts have been approved for a mixed use PUD with 87 townhouses on 10.98 acres and uses as allowed in the C4 district on the remaining portion. The town owns a parcel of land containing about 75 hundredths of an acre, which borders the tract approved for commercial uses as well as having frontage on Big Sun Lane. Alcorn Properties LLC has two separate requests. First, that the town abandon excess right of way of Percival Street bordering all four tracts, being theirs as well as the town's track incorporated into the overall development. Second, that the town enter into a swap of land where each party attains a buildable tract of commercial land. There's some information in your packet there that has, it just shows kind of the area that neither party in the commercial area really has a buildable area of land. And so this would allow for both parties to come out with a buildable area. The plat creating these lots has been approved by the planning commission pending approval and the swap and all the paperwork being done, taken care of. The proposal is for the town to ultimately own lot two, excuse me, as shown on the plat. Lot one is the multifamily townhome parcel. Then lot three would be Alcorn Properties. It's a swap, it's, it's actually a net gain of a little over 7,000 square feet for the town in the end. The, again, the planning commission did review this, did recommend approval and staff would also recommend approval.
Question for Kevin on this? Mark or Tim, anything to add? It's pretty straightforward. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next we have, under new business, item B, packaged liquor board report. My goodness, when is the last time we've? 18. Been a little while, hasn't it?
Actually, they're in the same location.
There we go. So this is a consideration of an application for a certificate of compliance for a packaged liquor store from Manish Patel and David Bowman and John Austin Lee III, Smyrna Wine and Spirits located at 830 Nissan Drive. Jeff, you taking this?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you read there, Mayor, you have the packets there before you. This was considered by the packaged liquor board this month and they have sent forward a positive recommendation to the council to grant this certificate. Obviously, normally I would say that, that since we already have the maximum number of stores, that this would be contingent upon the retirement of the other store. However, this is going in the same place, so there's not a need for that because they only go to as locations. So if you do approve this, it will not have to be any stipulation of the retirement of the former store, which was Spirits and Nissan Drive.
Just so the public knows, can you talk a little bit about the process itself, what all is looked at?
Yes, under title eight of our municipal code, section three, there is a litany of requirements for someone that would like to open a packaged liquor store. We only allow five currently. It goes by, I believe it's per 8,000 or 10,000, I can't remember, but it's population driven and so of course, right now it's limited to five. They have to provide financial information. Also, there is prohibitions of any type of criminal conduct or offenses against drug or alcohol or other crimes within the last 10 years, those types of things. And then, of course, they appear before the packaged liquor board, who then determines just sort of like what planning commission does, is they, they provide a recommendation, whether that's positive or do not deny and in this instance, they, as I stated, they have recommended approval.
Questions for Jeff on this? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Still waiting.
And while you're looking at this, this is the current stores and normally, if this was a new store, there was other issues that the codes department would ensure that it meets a certain amount of square footage, that it's far enough away from certain places and those types of things. But this is an existing location that's being purchased.
It's essentially transferring the existing license to someone else. Essentially. I mean, I know they're applying for a new, but the old one would go away.
Yes, sir. Yes.
I move to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Could you please mark me as not participating or abstaining from the vote?
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item nine, status reports. Brian?
Nothing.
Announcements?
You want to talk with Diane?
I didn't, was there any announcements that are?
No.
Okay. Ms. Diane?
Nothing.
Brian?
I do have a couple of things to share with the council tonight. You'll see on the screen, this week is the 9/11 dispatcher's public, public safety telecommunicator week. If you've noticed downtown around the depot district, we've lit it up in yellow and we just want to say thank you to our dispatchers until you're in desperate need of 911 or you see what happens when we have emergencies and the effectiveness of our dispatchers. You just cannot really go to the level of appreciation. Those, those folks do a great job, many times under a lot of pressure and we're just very thankful for them and the work they do. The next thing I've got, and we talk about this a lot and I'm going to continue to talk about this a lot, we're working hard to get the love where you live message out. You know, it's about littering. It's an independent decision that you make as an individual to litter or to drop trash or dump building materials and those kind of things on abandoned roads. It's a problem in our community, it's a problem across our county, it's a problem in Tennessee and I think if we went outside the scope, it's, it's beginning to be a problem everywhere. Ask that you keep a bag in your car for your trash and utilize those receptacles when you're at service stations or when you're at home and those type of places. Stop throwing food by the roadside, make sure your trash is secured. When you're hauling trash in your trucks, whether you're doing that commercially or if you're doing it for your own personal services to and from the convenience centers, there's literally a lot of trash that we're seeing that's coming out of backs of trucks. I have to tell you, we were coming down the road the other day from lunch and it was Jeff, myself and Todd and I think Kathy was with us and there was a pickup truck in front of us, had about six bags of garbage and one of them had come out of the truck and was hooked to the end of the truck and was flying behind the truck. Danny was losing his trash, but we weren't real effective with that.
Did you stop and pick all the trash up?
No trash escaped the bag. Luckily, the bag did not get out.
I'm sure you would have stopped and picked it all up though.
If the trash had come out of the truck, we probably would have stopped and picked it up.
Gee, this is probably why I asked for blue lights earlier to see.
That's exactly right.
Well, it turned out being someone that I knew.
I wasn't going to do that. To learn more about the Tennessee Adopt a Highway or Adopt a roadway program, go to www.nobodytrashtennessee.com and we are working on some PSAs and some educational things that we'll be getting out to the community soon. I did want to share, unfortunately, one of our employees at the Parks Department, Bud Mayberry, I don't know if y'all have heard this at this point, but his father passed away and I just wanted to extend our condolences to that family. I'll be getting some information out. This has happened in the last day or so and we, as you all know, we've been pretty busy, so I apologize for not getting that message out. The VIDA has extended their time from April the 15th till May the 17th. You can call 615-830-7940 to make an appointment. Again, they're going by appointment only because of COVID protocols, but the VIDA services have been extended. I received a nice email today from the chief that was sent to one of our firefighters that is on our color guard with the fire department. You may or may not know, our color guard actually performed the, the color guard services and presenting the colors before two of the Predators games this last week and they just wanted to say how well our color guard performed as they always do. They do us proud and we thank them for doing that. The last thing I want to talk about before we pass this along to Jeff is since the last time we met, in fact, I think the last time we met soon after, we were in a crisis. We had a tornado that went through our community and touched down and thanks to the work of our chief in the fire department and our chief in the police department, our streets department, everybody worked very hard, very quickly, got everybody secured. We did have about 77 homes, chief, that were affected by this tornado. It was pretty much limited to the west side of the interstate, through a couple of the neighborhoods on the Rocky Springs, Rock Springs corridor there. Luckily, no physical damage from personnel, personal injury reported, but a lot of damage to a lot of homes and we continue to support those folks. Chief and his folks have done a great job of doing the disaster assessment and gotten, gotten that information into EMA for us to hopefully be declared a disaster area. On top of that, a couple of days later, it decided to rain and rain hard and rain quickly for about 10 inches of rain. As most of you know, we had some very significant flooding, especially around the Eighth Avenue area, around the Volunteer Park. Several of our communities were affected for several days. Again, police, fire, streets department was out all hours of night and day. Todd Spearman, our assistant town manager, got a taste of what it feels like to stay up to about 5:30 in the morning chasing chief through the flood zones and keeping up with him. But everybody performed well. Again, no, you know, harm was reported by anyone as far as physical illness or damage to anyone. A lot of houses were affected by the flood and a lot of business was affected by the flood. Just want to say thank you to our folks. Again, streets, police, fire and also the Parks Department for doing a tremendous job of getting everything safed up that night, getting people in the right places, making the detours that we needed to make to get people home or to their, their work. But then afterwards, keeping everybody informed of where we were at on, on the different issues. So thank you to everyone. Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
Great. Jeffrey L.
I have nothing, ma'am.
Rockell?
Condolences to the Mayberry family and thank you to all the staff for all the work that you've done during these natural disasters that we've faced in the last several weeks. I'd also like to thank the staff for all the hard work that you put into the budget because we've just spent the last day and a half going over budget items. So I know you put a lot of time and effort into that and it was very thorough and we appreciate all that you did and your staff to get those ready for us. And lastly, Easter, the Easter buffet, I was able to participate in that and thanks to Chef and all of his staff, I think that went really well and everything was excellent.
It's nice not having to cook or clean up, wasn't it?
Always nice.
Agreed. Paige She?
Condolences to Bud Mayberry and his family and we iterate. I think the, the staff has come up with a terrific budget for us. One thing I want to do tonight is send a shout out to my mother. Mother's Day is still a month away, but I was talking to my mother on the way over here and, and I just feel the need to say, hey mama.
No matter how old we get, sometimes we need that.
We need our mama, that's exactly right. So with that, I will leave you to shop local and to be kind.
Thanks. Tim?
You do have a nice mother.
Thank you.
You do too.
Thank you.
And I'm sure everybody else up here does.
I remember your mother, she was a nice lady also.
I agree. I enjoyed sitting out there with her, got to know her pretty well.
That's just it, you got to hold on and love your mothers while they're here. Certainly my prayers to the Mayberry family and their loss. It's always a difficult time for our staff during the emergency. You guys make us look good and you make us proud. I appreciate that. And I appreciate all the effort that's gone into the budget process this year. I think we're bringing together a good product that everybody's going to be happy with.
Thanks. Jerry?
Also, my thoughts and prayers go out to the, to the Mayberry, Mayberry family as well. Also, want to just say the same thing to the Barnett family and the loss of Pam. Just keep John and the kids and all them and your, and your thoughts and prayers as well. Went to school with, with Pam and John, really some, some good people. As was mentioned before, the chiefs, both of you, thank you so much for what you did in those, those two instances. I was actually listening to the scanner that night and your, your voice is pretty, you can tell yours is pretty, pretty easy and, but I know all of you were out there working and just certainly appreciate everything that you guys did. And also Mike and his group in the Parks Department, I was out walking on Saturday and, and Mike was out there driving something, blowing off leaves and all. So I know they all go extra mile and you guys are up at night. all go extra mile, and you guys are up at nighttime and all the time, and I just really appreciate what you do for our town. Brian, your group, as far as the budgets, thank you. That was very informative. You guys always have, you've done your homework, and just want to thank all of them for all that they do. And then last, my son Josh is 41 today, so happy birthday to Josh.
Great. Steve?
Couple things. Also, my condolences for the Mayberry family. Little-known fact, Bud and I are distant cousins. His grandmother and my grandfather were brothers and sisters, so I'm sorry to hear about his mother passing. Also, I wasn't real clear on the message that came from Mount Juliet, exactly which department did what, but I just wanted to tell you, Brian, that I'm sure it all stemmed from your leadership and the leadership of the directors, and I really appreciate you guys lending a hand to Mount Juliet in their time of need so quickly. It was interesting to me, one of the things they said in the proclamation was, immediately the Town of Smyrna lent a hand, which meant, you know, before they had to ask. And I just, it makes me proud to know that we can be good neighbors and, you know, ultimately, we're all middle Tennessee family, right? So thank you for you and your staff for doing what you did for Mount Juliet.
And if you'll mind, I'll point out, the day after the tornado hit, we had two brush trucks and some chainsaws, and about six of our guys on the ground in Mount Juliet. They were over there for about a week and a half, and then also, our police department reached out and offered up some security services. We ended up, I don't think we did a whole lot in Mount Juliet at that time, but we did go up to Cookeville and provide some assistance with some security of some of the damaged areas.
It's good to hear, and I'm glad that Mount Juliet recognized the, you know, the benefit that they got from it. You know, that's what we're called to do as a, as a community, right? Is reach out. Sometimes it's not just Smyrna proper and Rutherford County even. So good job for everybody that jumped in, and I appreciate that. On the budget front, I'm excited about all of the things we've been able to do over the last couple of years, and I'm really excited to see that with the current budget, we can keep some of the momentum we have going. The road projects specifically, you know, that's kind of the pain point that everybody feels. I know we all hear about it probably, if not daily, definitely every other day. And obviously, there's a lot of projects going on right now, but I also want everybody to understand that this is, unfortunately, just the beginning of the pain. You've got to bear with us, but at the end of the day, it's going to be a much better environment, a much better road system when we get there. But we have more projects in the pipeline, and more projects that we are planning in the immediate future and the long-term future. And I think that's what we need to be doing and what we should be doing. I appreciate you guys putting that time, specifically Tom and Charles, I think you're both here, really appreciate the work y'all are putting in to keep Smyrna moving forward. That's all.
And just to kind of follow up with that, all of that that we're looking at is without a tax increase, which I think is important to know. I didn't want anybody to think that we might have to do that this year.
Much of it is with cash. It is with money that we have. It is not something, I don't want to say we won't have to incur debt, but we're trying to do it without any debt and without any tax increase. And that tells you a lot about the state of the finances in the town and the leadership that the previous councils and the current council and the previous town managers have put forward.
Good.
And our largest revenue source is from shopping local.
Sales tax revenue.
So be kind and shop local.
Yeah, I want to echo what everybody said about the budget retreat. You know, the resounding answer that I heard during the retreat from everybody is, what do our citizens need and what do our citizens want from us? And I think we're meeting a lot of those goals. You know, we talk about quality of life, we talk about road improvements, we talk about where they can live, work, and play. And to Steve just mentioned, you know, past councils, this council, and hopefully, future councils too, all feel the same drive to make Smyrna just a better place to live. You know, the nice lady that spoke about the Old Nashville Highway 40 mile-per-hour speed limit request for change, she talked, she said something, it caught my ear, she said, Smyrna still is a small-town atmosphere, and that's a challenge for all of us. It's something we all want to continue to do with our events and our parks and our, you know, anything that we can do to keep Smyrna feeling like it was Smyrna 30, 40 years ago, or even longer. And there's a lot of legacy to continue that way. So I do want to say thank you to the staff and all their preparations of the budget. And, you know, you mentioned Tom and Charles back there, they are out there with their sleeves rolled up, getting these road jobs done constantly every day. Sam Reilly Parkway's got orange barrels everywhere, Jefferson Pike's got orange barrels everywhere. To Steve's point, it's going to continue. It's going to take a while to get those done. So to all the departments, all of our staff, all you guys, we appreciate each and every one of you, we shared that at the retreat, but publicly here, I just want to make sure that that message gets sent out to the public to let them see, we are blessed, guys, to live in a place that has what it has to offer, and to be able to do it without incurring a ton of debt, and to move forward and make Smyrna better. So thank you all for doing that. Jerry mentioned Pam Barnett's loss, the Barnett family, I'd like to do the same, and to Johnny and the whole family. Also, the Cobble family, Pam is actually a Cobble, and I grew up right there on the same street with Pam and Kelvin and the Cobble family, so I know them pretty well. It's hard on them to lose a daughter, you know? So my condolences also to the Mayberry family, and having grown up here, we know a lot of people. One of my old friends, longtime friend, is Gary Barnes, he works here at the town, and Gary just went under, underwent a little surgery today, so I want to give my best wishes to Gary for full recovery. And with that, Mayor, that's all I've got.
I hope Gary doesn't do any talking when he's under anesthesia about some of y'all's escapades.
Well, he might, I'll deny them all, just like any of you would, right?
Best wishes to Gary as well. A couple of housekeeping items. I'm excited to announce that the Smyrna Depot Farmers Market will open Saturday, May the 22nd. The market is a partnership between Carpe Artista, Smyrna Parks and Recreation, and Pick Tennessee Products. Vendor applications are still available, so please email vendors@carpeartista.com. The market will adhere to guidelines of the CDC and prevention, and the Tennessee pledge for the safety of vendors and guests, but we look forward to a great season. It's hard to believe it's that time of year again, so looking forward to that, starting on Saturday, May the 22nd. Also, registration opened on April the 1st for the 2021 Top Gun Night Run. We invite runners and walkers of all ages and abilities to join us for this event. It will take place November the 5th of this year at Lee Victory Recreation Park, and you can visit the townofsmyrna.org website, and there is a button for the Top Gun Night Run. I think we're almost to 200 runners of 650, so I would encourage you to go ahead and get signed up if you have not done that. It is definitely a night of fun.
Mayor, they can walk if they want.
Absolutely, they can walk. They can walk.
Jump on a golf cart, Chief, but that's a different conversation.
Whatever it takes.
I didn't bring that up.
Whatever it takes. Or be pulled in the wagon. That's right. So also want to echo Raquel, chef and staff did a great job at the buffet. We've kind of, as a family, went down this year and years past. It is really nice for nobody to have to take on the cooking, and chef and them do an amazing job. So are we going to be doing a Mother's Day?
We will be doing Mother's Day, and they are taking reservations for Mother's Day already.
I would highly recommend, if you want to attend the Mother's Day brunch, that you go ahead and get your reservation early. Also, want to say condolences to the Barnett family. You know, you never saw Pam without a smile. Always, always a smile on that face, and boy, did she love that grandbaby. So condolences to them, and also to Bud and Amy. We will keep you guys in our thoughts and our prayers. Also, want to say thank you to staff. I know we've spent the last two days looking at budget collectively together. We've got our budget books a while back, and we're able to go through it, but I know you all have been doing it for quite a while to get it to the point in which you bring it to us, and I appreciate the job in which you all do to bring us the budget. I also appreciate the job in which you do to put us in the financial position in which you have put us. I guarantee you that there are communities across this country that would do anything to be in the financial state, the financial state that we are in right now. We are in a great place. So anything else?
One thing I forgot to mention, I continue to pray for our members that are serving active duty. I told you that my son had been doing some work with the COVID vaccine. He is now being redeployed to New Orleans tomorrow, I believe. Be there for a couple of months. So they are using active-duty military around the country in a lot of cities to help with the rollout of the vaccine, so. He's, his word is, it's only challenging sometimes, that most of the time, it's quiet and peaceful, and everybody's happy to get their shot, but occasionally, it is a challenge. So he, he seems to be, I don't want to say enjoying it, but he's making the most out of what he's got, so.
Kind of like council, quiet and peaceful most of the time, but occasionally can be a challenge.
Can be.
That's right. Anything else? If nothing else, then we are adjourned.